Forty minutes to start this evening around the legislative platform agenda item. Then next on the agenda is our strategic plan. We'll be looking at the vision cards and strategic roadmap for which we've been working on. And we've allotted sixty minutes or less for that. Then if, assuming we're on time, we'll have a time for a ten minute break before going into our tax levy update, which we've allotted about fifteen minutes for. And then we'll have an enrollment update that we've allotted forty minutes or less. And then lastly, our school board calendar review with ten minutes or less here before finishing up hopefully prior to nine P M. So, and we can always provide additional information with any follow up questions following the meeting. So I'm going to quickly move us along here. Our first agenda item tonight is our District two seventy-nine legislative platform. And Valerie Dosland from Ewald is here to give the board a legislative update prior to the start of the new session. And also share an update on the state budget forecast that was released this morning. And then John Marston will go through the proposed I S D two seventy-nine legislative platform for two thousand and twenty-two. So I think Valerie or John's going to go first, it looks like. So, thank you, John.
Thank you, Chair McIntyre.
Chair McIntyre.
Yeah, we're just in role.
Thanks for not saying McGuire.
Chair Dawson Walton. I will, actually, we'll start by handing off to Valerie Dosland from Ewald, who is the district lobbyist, and she will be open today.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here. Thank you for having me. I just, I'm going to start by giving you kind of an overview of what I do for the district. I first would like to just thank the board for the opportunity to help the district with its legislative priorities and relationship building of capital. Some of the things that I do in regards to being the lobbyist to do this, because I help with the development of the legislative platform and advancement of that capital. Regarding bill introductions, et cetera, and any committee testimony. I also keep track of committee hearings and session monitoring for issues that arise of interest to O C O and opportunity to provide feedback. And then lastly, just help the district with relationship building with its area delegation. It's work I really enjoy, so thank you. Just real quick, I'll start with kind of the big news today that everyone was waiting for, and I think we've got a huge sigh of relief. The budget forecast was released this morning, and it showed that the Minnesota State of Minnesota has brought in seven point seven four six billion dollars more than originally forecasted. It is the largest budget surplus in the history of the state, far different than we were last year this time with, I think, I think, a three billion dollar budget deficit. The forecast is a result of a number of things. One is the income and sales tax and corporate taxes are coming in higher than anticipated. There, on the education side, there are pupil count changes that amount to several hundred million dollars in savings to the state. The pupil count reductions are primarily because of birth rate reductions, not necessarily pandemic enrollment loss like we saw last year. Of that seven point seven four six billion dollars, a little over three billion is considered one-time money. And then almost four and a half billion is considered ongoing. In addition to the budget surplus, the state also has one point one five billion dollars in unallocated American Rescue Plan dollars. The legislature and the governor last session agreed to come back this next session to decide how that revenue should be spent. In addition, kind of one big elephant in the room or one big issue the legislature will have to tackle this year is Minnesota received a loan from the federal government for unemployment insurance costs for the additional benefits that were provided to individuals who were laid off because of COVID. That funding does have to be repaid to the state, and that is about one billion dollars. There's a discussion, the Senate majority this last week said that they believe that's how the American Rescue Plan dollars should be used. The governor and the House have not indicated yet what, how they feel about that approach, but it will certainly be a talking point and a discussion for a debate with the legislature this next session. The session begins January thirty-first. It is the second year of our biennial cycle. Last year was the budget year where they have to pass a two-year state budget. If they don't, we would have gone into state government shutdown. This year, the legislature does not have to accomplish anything. They don't have the hammer like the threat of a government shutdown. But I certainly think with a seven point seven billion dollar surplus, there is going to be a lot of energy around trying to figure out what to do with that, that funding. Not surprisingly, I think we'll see a difference of opinion in both the House and Senate and with the governor on how that revenue should be allocated. I think you'll see again a discussion on tax cuts in the Senate and the governor and the House really looking at investments and spending. And we certainly saw that kind of in the different press conferences that were held today regarding the budget. In regards to how they'll operate, last year, they operated remotely due to COVID, and I would say not a lot is going to change this next session. The House has announced that they will operate the same as they did last year. The Senate will be on a little more modified schedule where meetings are, you can have meetings in the Senate Office Building with senators, but it's, you have to be let in. It's not going to be open to the public as we're used to. And then again, floor sessions, members on both bodies will be in the chambers for floor sessions. But, and opportunities to testify will be done in person in the Senate, but I would venture to guess that we'll operate a lot more via Zoom as we have just because of the state of the pandemic right now. In regards to the education area, I think we'll, issues that we would expect to be coming forward this next legislative session is certainly education funding. The budget surplus today, you know, we'll see a lot of, a lot of educational organizations coming to ask for funding in regards to continued special ed, maybe formula funding or inflationary funding on the formula. E L L, as you might recall, the special ed funding provided last year and the E L L funding was only temporary. It wasn't ongoing. So I think you'll see a push to try to make that permanent. Mental health is a big issue that we hear districts talking about of their students and staff, so would expect an interest in that this next session. From a policy perspect, and lastly, you know, obviously, you all are very well aware of the teacher and staff shortages. So I think we'll see an interest in having some of those issues looked at this session. The Page Amendment, which is a proposal that former Justice Alan Page and Minneapolis Fed Chairman Neil Kashkari have been talking about the last several years regarding what the language in the Constitution states regarding right to a public education. They will have a big push for that this next legislative session. I think we'll see some additional, you know, policy items regarding more flexibility for online learning options for schools to provide online learning options as well as school discipline. And then I think we'll get a better sense in the coming weeks, prior to the beginning of session at the end of January, what both the House and Senate majorities might be thinking as well. And then the governor's budget will come out sometime in January or early February. I'm available if you have any questions about the session. If not, I'll hand it over to John for the platform.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie. So now I'd like to take the opportunity to go through the draft version of the two thousand and twenty-two legislative platform. The first page is the same as it has been in the last few years. It's a quick highlight in demographic information, some achievement information. On the district, we've updated this information to the most recent years, but it is ultimately the same bullet points that you've seen in the past. So we get into the platform itself. Oops, let me get down there the other way. So there's five major categories. And I'll just kind of read the beginning, which is, again, is similar to last year. O C O area schools is committed to eliminating racial disparities in academic achievement and other aspects of school life in order to unleash the brilliance of each of our scholars. The following priorities have been identified to secure the necessary funds to achieve this critical goal. First category is continued COVID-related relief. Mitigate the financial impact of schools because of COVID nineteen by continuing funding to support mental health needs of our students and staff. Use F Y twenty free reduced meal application data to determine compensatory revenue for fiscal twenty-three. As you know, that number decreased dramatically as they did free meals. There wasn't an incentive to fill out the paperwork. Therefore, the number of applications has declined. Last year, we saw that. This year, we're seeing an improved number, but it's still down a little bit over our historical trend. And then finally, providing additional funding if the pandemic should continue into fiscal twenty-three. Next section is stable predictable funding. First item is link the basic formula and local optional revenue to inflation to provide a stable and consistent funding stream. So O C O schools can ensure long-range planning and achieve the district's strategic priorities. Second point is about special education financing to increase to one hundred percent of the state's statutory obligation. And if you'll note here, our current special ed cross subsidy is twenty-five point four million dollars. And the next point addresses the needs of English learners, which is the identified group with the largest achievement gap in O C O area schools. That cross subsidy is currently about ten million dollars, or excuse me, is eight point six million. Now, the legislature did approve ten million dollars for this, this last year to help address this. But keep in mind that this is ten million divided by all districts in Minnesota over a four-year time period. So in actuality, the dollar amount would be pretty low. Moving into the safe and supportive learning environments, first point is to expand allowable uses for long-term facility maintenance funding to include the modification of buildings to enhance specifically safety and security. And then increase safe schools revenue to provide necessary mental health supports for student and staff. Next category is support achievement gap closure through recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. Specifically, continue to expand programs and incentives to attract, develop, and retain teachers of color. Again, the first step of this was passed in the last legislative session. We're asking that this continue and continue to grow and expand. And the second one is remove barriers and provide incentives to address shortages of substitute teachers, school bus drivers, professionals, and other staff. And then the last category is the general reduction of mandates, that the O C O area schools opposes any new unfunded mandates and that we also be allowed to post minutes and budget information on the district website rather than having to be published in the newspaper. So that is the summary of what the platform is. This point, I would turn it back over to Chair Dawson Walton for any questions, comments. Again, this is a draft, so this can certainly be changed, or we can make additions, whatever the board sees fit.
All right. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question in terms of activity happening at the legislature. So have there, given that we've learned to operate in a virtual environment, has there been any proposals to extend open meeting law to a virtual environment where it can qualify as meeting, open meeting law by meeting, without an emergency situation, meeting in a virtual environment?
There was nothing introduced last session, but I believe that this may be something that M S B A might be addressing this session. I think it was one of their proposed delegate assembly resolutions. I'm not sure what happened this weekend at their conference, but.
And then a second question. Oh, sorry. A second question. So there's been a variety of different school districts reducing public comment or putting some more restrictions around public comment or not broadcasting public comment. And I've heard that that may be spurring some interest in some type of legislative action regarding the public comment section of school board meetings. Have you heard, have you seen anything coming forward, or is that still kind of just percolating?
It's currently just percolating. I haven't seen any specific legislative proposals, but about a month ago, the Chair of the Senate Education Finance Committee did push out a press release talking about concerns about that and wanting to look at it, but not, no details or specific proposals. But it's certainly, I think, something that, that might be come up, at least in the Senate.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, well, to that end, speaking of the M S B A, I participated as part of the delegate assembly this weekend. And I had four that I want to bring to your attention that I think we can include as a part of our legislative platform that M S B A passed. And I'll send you more information, again, including what the passage was, each of the twenty-four resolutions, whether or not they passed or failed. One that I sponsored was resolution number two, is a grant for accessibility improvements that calls upon the state legislature to establish funding to support school district facility improvements directly related to the Inocentipin case, providing funds or reimbursement for school districts who have already made facility improvements. So that is something that O C O could also apply for, because we already started doing some of that work. Resolution number eight was that English learner cross subsidy phase out. There's a lot of information in that. I'll leave that to that. Resolution number nine, full-service community schools, which I think would greatly benefit the O C O community, especially as we're maneuvering out of the pandemic and we're really trying to support all of our students where they're at and their families. And then M S B, M S B A resolution number eleven, which is a move towards fully funding public nutrition, public school nutrition, so that we don't have to have these, have parents fill out forms anymore. And it talks about addressing the way we change those formulas for that. So I will follow up with more information and discuss with you later, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
With that said, was there any discussion about, if you can just open meeting law?
I'm looking.
Sorry to play on this one.
I don't think so.
Um, did you have any, anything else?
No, you know, I would say if there is an opportunity to support an update to open meeting law just to meet the environment that we are now in in two thousand and twenty-one, particularly post-pandemic, but we're not post-pandemic yet, but you get what I'm saying. If there's an opportunity to support that, I would certainly support that, I think, adding our voice to that of, you know, our surrounding cities and county and, you know, other school districts, I think, is, would hopefully help to push us in the right direction there. And then also, I just want to say, I'm sort of really supportive of this agenda. The one thing I was particularly excited about is, one of the last items, what is this pop-up? Sorry, it's blocking my screen. The last one about removing barriers and providing incentives to address the shortage of substitute teachers, school bus drivers, I know we need. All the help we can get there, and I'd be very interested to see how those discussions go with the legislature, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, just a follow-up, read really quickly. Resolution number eighteen passed to allow for the use of online interactive digital meetings as long as requirements are met to promote transparency, engagement, and engagement.
You said that was eighteen?
Yeah. I just said.
Under reducing mandates, so in our platform, we only talk about unfunded mandates, but the state standards continue to become very prescriptive. And there's been some legislative proposals for even mandating a specific curriculum. I, as part of our discussion, I think that we should be considering opposing any mandated or overly prescriptive standards and curriculum, because I think it's important that we have our autonomy as a local school district to ensure our curriculum reflects the needs of our district. So that, that's something that I have interest in thinking about.
So when I'm looking at this, one thing that, you know, we've really talked about a lot over the years is how important our legislative platform is to really narrow down to the really specific things that we absolutely need to have. And so when I think about that and I think about like the long-term outlook of our district and I see COVID on here, I kind of wonder. I kind of wonder if that should be here on our legislative platform or if there are other things that are more imperative to the students in our district that we should elevate to this legislative platform or put a bigger emphasis on. And what I'm wondering is, are other districts, including this type of language, in their platforms? And to what extent they're doing that? And what is already being talked about legislatively and related to COVID relief funds? Because if this is the conversation that's already happening, maybe as a district, we could consider not having this be part of our legislative platform, but putting something else that is very important to our district to be on here.
Again, I can't necessarily speak to MSBA because I haven't gotten an update on which resolutions have passed. So I know that AMSD legislative platform, they, I don't know if they specifically call out COVID, but they do call out some specific proposals like increases to the safe schools levy and the increasing mental health needs of students. MASA, the school superintendents or school administrators are currently finalizing their platform. And I know that mental health is an increasing priority issue for that organization. And I know that will be on their platform. And I can't speak to MRAI. I haven't seen the Rural Ed Association or Schools for Equity and Education platforms yet. We're all kind of right in the stage where Oseo is right now. I mean, AMSD just recently approved their platform, but all the other organizations are in the thought stages right now.
So I guess, you know, I think, you know, when we're talking about funding for mental health, that's something that we've talked about pre-COVID and I believe will continue to talk about forever. Because it's a part of our daily lives. And so I would really pull that out as a separate legislative strategy, something that we want to have on here, long-term possibly. But I wouldn't necessarily say that needs to be tied specifically to COVID relief, because that implies that there's an end and that we will no longer need those types of services and funding for our students, which I think is inaccurate to assume. And then also, when it comes to the free and reduced meal application data, you know, I know that there's been conversations, like Director Grady has already brought up, about moving toward a different type of funding format so that meals for children are not an issue, period. And I also know that when we looked at our data around the free and reduced meal applications as far as who is applying and who is eligible, typically, what we've seen in the past is when we do an audit, a significant portion of our families actually don't qualify for it, even if they have a need for food. And so I kind of think that, again, maybe if we're talking about wanting to have kids have access to food that isn't self-funded, that that should be pulled out as a separate line item and not tied specifically to COVID, because that will not, COVID isn't going to go on forever, so we're going to have to look at these things in a bigger picture. And so those are the two things that I was thinking about when I was looking over this. I really do appreciate having the opposing any new unfunded mandates. That's been an issue in the past, and so I'm glad that that's in there. But I also agree with Director Simon's comments that we should be a little bit more specific in our language for that. I don't know what you guys think on that, but to not prescribe specific curriculums legislatively as it will likely hinder our ability to meet the needs of our students in their unique ways. So those are my comments right now.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? Would you prefer something that says, that calls out curriculum specifically or something that just stresses local control?
Both.
You want, you'd rather?
I would say both. But definitely curriculum specifically. I think that, you know, we have a pretty well-established set of standards that are provided to us by the legislature. And when we have new standards come out, we have to follow them. But we have creative flexibility and we can adopt curriculums that are better suited to our specific students. And I would really oppose having a specific statewide, everybody's wanting this one thing versus having the ability to make those choices at the district independently.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you both for all of your work on this. I really appreciate how you focused on the importance of mental health by including it both in the COVID part as well as the safe and supportive learning environments. And I also think that's something that we have broad concerns about across the state is the unfunded piece of the mandates. And that as we're advocating, you know, a top line for fully funding our schools, period, is making sure that those mandates are funded. So thank you for drawing that distinction.
I had a question, Valerie. You had mentioned that you had, when you kind of did your rundown, did you say something about student discipline at the legislature?
Yes, I did. So last, over the course of the last several years, there have been proposals that have advanced either in the House or by the Department of Education through the administration. And my understanding is that those proposals will continue to advance this next legislative session. I think Tim might be able to talk a little bit about it. But my recollection of the proposals that we're likely to see, one is a prohibition on K-3 dismissal, more clarification on in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension, and more definitions regarding non-exclusionary discipline. Off the top of my head, those are the ones that I recall from a meeting that some of us had with the department last week. The K-3 dismissal was something that had been advanced by the House. The Senate had some discipline proposals. I'm not sure, and I apologize, I can't remember what they were off the top of my head. But I know that the ones that were advanced by the department and the House were, got a lot of focus and attention. And we expect to see those again this session.
Okay, and in regards to redistricting coming up and the results of the 2020 census, what is the impact of, on our school districts, if any? I know that Susan Brower did some webinars on it and I didn't get a chance to listen in. So do you have any insight on the impact?
I mean, I can only speak to the impact on what would happen legislatively. You know, it'll be, it's, every legislator is anxiously awaiting their new map.
Sure.
They will have to run for reelection. The House is up for reelection every two years, but the Senate typically is only up every four. But they, the Senate will be up for reelection with the new legislative maps. The legislature won't agree to legislative maps, and so that will be decided by the courts. I'm not sure how that trickles down into, you know, the school district.
And what's the, like, when will that all be released?
I believe it should happen about in February or March.
I think just overall, I'm supportive of the platform. I mean, I would be interested, Director Douglas, when you wrap the mental health, we know that that's a continued, you know, interest for our board and our community. And I just, also, I think we just need to, you know, if there is opportunities for us to testify on anything on our, you know, platform, I, you know, encourage to us just to be aware of those opportunities.
Chair Dawson, can I add some things? And I would echo that last sentiment that, you know, we often are asked to maybe testify in things that are beyond the platform if we have experts in a certain area on a, on a variety of topics. I know Anthony, for example, is there often on technology and other things like that. So a couple of thoughts too, I could, so know that we're able to do those things even if, you know, they're not on the platform. And there's, I think of some special provisions over the years I've testified on that that are very kind of detailed, driven by, have high impact that we would want to testify on, for example, but may not rise to a platform level item. The, you know, a couple of ideas here for the board. We really would like to bring this back for approval next week so that it's in place and ready to go when we begin to meet with our legislators in January, as we're planning some touchpoints with them. And the, for example, the three points under COVID relief, you could argue those are long, like, they could just be moved under stable predictable funding, mental health. And I would love to see a different calculation or criteria or formula for compensatory ed so that is a little bit more targeted effort in how we can get those dollars. We've seen the impact of using free reduced lunch, maybe there's a better way. And I think there's been some state groups that have looked at that. So that's one way we could rethink the compensatory ed, and that maybe that's just a funding item. And then, you know, I think it's, you know, the financial impact, should there be continuing impacts around the pandemic that, yeah, we really would like to see that continued support. So maybe those are things that just maybe fall into that next. We could shrink five categories to four, potentially. And then, not on the mandates part, you know, either unfunded or underfunded. And I know we've always wrestled with that language around some things. And I just, I'll chime in on the standards piece. You know, we got social studies, science, math, and ELA standards coming us in the future. My belief is the standards will be set by the state. Districts still get to decide and go through that adoption process for the materials that we want to use for our teachers to use. So I support that. I'd be really surprised if the state mandated the actual curriculums because there's vendors everywhere, right? And that's a business. So I'd be really surprised there. But we do know, as you've seen in our recent presentations, the number of standards that are coming in the near set of years to come. So those are just some things to, and then, you know, expanding our programs and incentives to attract, develop, and retain teachers of color. We've gotten those grants. We would love to see those bigger, because we've seen some success. But because they're small, I think we need to push hard on this expansion of that. And we got a great model to show some results. So those would be some feedback elements, but maybe that's a way to simplify, because I think it's messaging too. So when we get in front of our legislators to be able to rail off in a pretty concise way, these are our highest priorities. Maybe getting it from five categories to four, as I'm listening to this, could help with the messaging around that. But really, this is your platform, so that's just input I'm offering the board to consider as we move into next week's meeting.
I have one more piece of feedback I just was looking through. And so on our front page, we say supporting high levels of achievement for all students. And on the back page, ensuring equitable student achievement, we dropped the word "high." I know we've gone back and forth over the years on this, but I think we should be ensuring that the language is consistently reflecting what we're aiming for, which is not just equitable student achievement, but high best-in-class for all. And that's continued to be something that comes through our feedback, that we want high standards for all of our students. So I don't, I don't like that on one side it says that we have supporting high levels of achievement, and then we drop the word "high level." So that's my feedback for the second page.
I have one comment. And I know this is going to come up, so I'm just commenting on this since it just came up a second ago. But I think there is this misperception that when we talk about equity, we're talking about lower standards or that we're not talking about high standards. And so for consistency, if we want to change that language, I'm supportive. But I also don't agree with this perception that sometimes comes up that when we talk about equity, we're not talking about high standards across the district. The one comment I did have was on the continued COVID-related relief. It could be supportive, and I do agree with much of what was said related to the fact that some of these are long-term needs. I think my one concern with convincing this to four instead of having that COVID-related relief is that if there's an opportunity at the legislature to push for some additional funding in these areas because of the impact of COVID, I wouldn't want to miss that opportunity. And so maybe you have a comment on that, but I think I'd be good either way. I just, again, don't want to miss an opportunity for COVID-related relief if that were to come up.
What we were saying just briefly there is that we could actually add a little bit of narrative, kind of to call that out without necessarily making it a bullet point, kind of as you lead into the four main categories, if that's the direction you want us to go. That's another option, so. Yeah, I completely support it, and I would guess especially having a surplus that we have, there's still needs. And kind of to the bottom point, and maybe that's redirected or the, sorry, the last point under the COVID one, what if this continues past June 30th? Do we have to call it out? No. Is it going to be part of the conversation with the legislature regardless? Because it's still the world we're living in.
Valerie, I'd like to, what do you, do you have a, in terms of just making your case and just having kind of our talking points at the legislature, do you, is it helpful to have a call out on, at least specifically, COVID at this point?
Well, I like the idea of adding it to the narrative portion. And certainly, I think, when there's opportunity to have Oseo's voice heard, I can work with John regarding what are the best talking points and what is happening specifically in the district that we can tie to, whether it's some long-term needs or some short, the more immediate needs regarding the pandemic. So I feel comfortable with that approach. And I will do whatever I can to find messaging that works to advocate for the district's priorities, whether it's spelled out on the platform or not.
Okay. Okay, so are we, do we want to?
Well, I would just say, if John, unless you're going to walk up and say the same thing, I'm going to, we'll take that feedback and try to make some adjustments here for you to act on next week, to try to give us as much opportunity, right, to get our voice on these key areas that you've identified. Sorry, John, if I said...
So on that note, I have just a request, I guess. I know you guys are working on a lot of different things, but the sooner we can have this to review, if we're going to be voting on this on Tuesday, to provide any additional feedback would be really greatly appreciated. Just because things get away from you quickly, and if we don't get it till Friday and, you know, all of a sudden, we're voting on Tuesday, I would prefer it before that, if it's at all possible. I know that you guys have other things that you're working on, but it'd be helpful for me.
We'll absolutely do our best.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Valerie.
Okay, I'm going to thank you, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, our strategic planning with vision cards. Drum roll, vision cards, we've been talking about them for a long time, and here we finally are. And then also, moving towards finalization of our strategic roadmap. So as we've discussed in a number of previous meetings, we've really spent, if you step back, nearly two years since we began our strategic planning process, which, you know, has been kind of stopped and started along the way here since things have been interrupted on and off. And since our work began in early 2020, dozens of input sessions, hundreds of staff, students, and families have been involved in the various components as we've merged it with other processes, including ECAP and our Equity Context Analysis Process. We've, you know, from my perspective, we now have nearly all the components of our new planned portfolio ready to go. So a three-year district operational plan, the draft vision cards, which Michael Lee Han will present shortly, the board's one-year plan, which will continue to evolve into a three-year plan as well, the desired daily experience of our scholars, families, and staff, and a nearly complete strategic roadmap, which hopefully, you know, we will be able to get to that point and take action at our next meeting. Know also that we still have yet to do the work of completing our school and department improvement plans, which we've begun creating this year. And already, our departments have begun to phase in those items into our district operational plan. The vision cards that you'll see tonight are the way in which we will hold ourselves as a district accountable for reaching the vision and the results of our new strategic plan. So that's the critical component there. This is something that you, as board members, and many in our district community have been requesting. The strategic roadmap provides that directional clarity that we need for the district by all, with the assistance of others in this department that have been charged with the work of developing these vision cards based on board direction. And they're going to work to present those with you first tonight. So thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Corey. Good evening, school board members.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent McIntyre, fellow cabinet members, members of the viewing audience. With me this evening is Dwayne Wardelli, Director of Educational Equity, who I'd like to just pause for a moment and introduce to each of you. I believe this is his first time that he's been at the meeting. And so Dwayne comes from us from New York, and I'm just happy he showed up today because yesterday it was single digits, and he came back to work today. So it only gets better from here, Dwayne, so welcome. Also, I have with me this evening Tom Watkins, Coordinator of Data and Assessment for the Department of Teaching and Learning and Learning and Achievement. This evening, we are excited to share the long-awaited first draft of our vision cards. As each of you knows, vision cards serves as a monitoring system that measures our orientation with our district goals for performance and continuous improvement. This document is a culmination of our data gathered through the Equity-Oriented Strategic Plan process, which included many listening sessions from a variety of stakeholder groups. In response, this document aims to apply quantifiable measures that will tell us how we are progressing towards vision. As we dive into this comprehensive document, I first want to celebrate the work of my colleagues and share the tremendous thought and consideration that went into this document. They spent time triangulating all the data we had while also honoring board direction and the feedback we had while also honoring board direction and the feedback we received from our World's Best Workforce presentations. I would also be remiss if I didn't also recognize them for putting up with me throughout the process. Honestly, a true and sincere thank you to each of them for investing their talents, their passion, their wisdom for this transformative document. We see this document as an aspirational document. Certainly, we can come before you with a compliance document, a document that reports on many of the world's best workforce indicators. This document is intended to align vision and practice. Some of these measures are not fully in place, and honestly, they shouldn't be. If we are embarking on a new strategic roadmap, that also means we are looking differently at who we are, what we celebrate, and how we ensure impact while leveraging intentional metrics to get to mission delivery point, vision. However, it's important to note that we have allocated resources in each of the areas that can be developed to build out each measure and support implementation and progress monitoring. As you look at this document, we consider it a framework toward excellence, a theory of action document, with the intent of examining the people, the policies, and the practices that are resulting in equitable outcomes within our system or getting in the way of optimal performance by each member within our organization. The vision card highlights major themes as derived from the strategic directives. The vision cards emphasize the following themes: accountability and advancing inclusion, as well as equity and belonging; innovation, community engagement, personalized pathways, and continuous improvement, which has the standard of compliance matrix, I'm sorry, metrics. With that, let me orientate you to this document. You will see each vision card is headed by the associated strategic direction. As you work down the document, you will see two boxes, one that provides unifying language for the direction, because some of these directions that we want measured, we also offered some framing to hone in on the specific deliverables to unify those of whom are responsible for enacting these deliverables. The intent of the mindful critical questions is to ensure that we are magnifying the identified areas for growth, which we heard from our stakeholders during the data collection process. Finally, the table with the mechs, here you will see our progression related to a specific deliverable. The intent is that we are not zero or 100%, but somewhere in the middle. As we get closer to vision, we then need to adjust our operational plan to a more rigorous goal. This table also indicates inputs and outputs. This is, in essence, our theory of action. If we do the measured inputs, which is technical, then our outputs adaptive will rise. Our outputs are aspirational items, which are aligned closely with the feedback throughout the data collection process. At the bottom of the document, we have outlined just a few thought partners sourced within our organization who can support implementation and execution of these goals. We will walk through each direction and highlight one metric to ensure we honor the time allotted. At this time, I want to invite Tom, Coordinator of Data and Assessment for the Department of Teaching and Learning, who will share some of the metrics. We will first start this evening with strategic direction A, which is articulated as create safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments that foster global curiosity, belonging, innovation, and engagement. Thank you, Michael.
I just want to share some of our guiding principles. This was also reflected in the process that Michael was talking about. We felt that measures should connect to our daily work and be actionable. It should be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound, so smart goals. We should have sustainable data collection process. We want each stakeholder to be able to identify at least one indicator that they believe they can influence. We want members from each cultural, racial, and underrepresented group to see value in the measures and in the work that's required to improve on these measures. Michael mentioned a couple of things about this document that I just want to underscore. One is that we're connecting the core processes and the outcomes, which is really reflecting the model that we're talking about here with the strategic planning process. And then also, as you'll see in this document, we have percentages listed in here for the various categories, and those are really illustrations right now. So we're not at a place where we can finalize those, but once we get to the point where we can finalize all the indicators, then we can really identify targets and benchmarks that are going to be reasonable and challenging, and that are really going to be all about excellence and equity. So the indicators that we'll focus on tonight, one of them is A5 here in the first section. I'll just scroll to that. And so this is belonging, help, and trusting adults. These are scales from our existing Student Stakeholder Survey. Belonging includes the question, "I'm comfortable sharing my thoughts and ideas at school." Help includes the question, "I have at least one adult I can turn to if there's a problem." And trusting adults includes the question, "I can count on the adults at my school to help me learn and achieve." So that is just one of those indicators. It happens to be an outcome indicator in that first section, so in section A there. When we go down to B, which is build and nurture a culture of achievement by providing content-rich, rigorous, and individualized pathways, we'll also feature this last indicator here, which is the graduation continuation rate. In this indicator, graduation rate is expanded because we know that many of our students receiving services for special education or multilingual education have needed more time than just the four, standard four years to graduate. And it's also based on our World's Best Workforce report. We want to continue to focus on our dropout rate. We want to reduce that dropout rate. And so this indicator will do that by challenging us to increase the number of students who graduate on time or continue for a fifth year of high school with those services that we mentioned. We also have one to illustrate here under C, which is promote inclusive participation of all of our communities and provide timely, relevant, and easily accessible communication. And here, we're looking at C3, which is school-to-family communication. And this particular indicator focuses on talking points, messages, and announcements sent from staff to families. And if you're not familiar with talking points, it's an innovative way to advance educational equity and family engagement through translated communication. For example, a staff member writes a text message in English to a parent, and talking points translates that message into the parent's preferred language. The parent then responds in their preferred language, and talking points translates the message back to English. So talking points has really been revolutionary within our system in terms of family engagement. We have a tremendous amount of engagement that has come through that. And the great thing about it is that we can look at messages going both ways. So we have one indicator here that is a process indicator, that is the messages going out, and another is an outcome indicator, which is really the degree of family engagement or these messages coming back from parents. The service of equity is extended in ASIO because while there are many multilingual families using talking points, there's also large numbers of English-speaking families that are using it. Under the section of D here, create a system of operational innovation, excellence, accountability, and sustainability. I just wanted to highlight D3. D3 is student developmental skills and supports. And this is an analysis of the Minnesota Student Survey data by the Minnesota Youth Development Research Group at the University of Minnesota. The Minnesota Student Survey contains a lot of research-based questions and scales. And these particular scales that we would focus on are focused on positive youth development. This is informed by positive psychology and the developmental asset approaches. This provides us with a strong set of principles through which to be better equipped to meet the needs of youth across diverse communities. And what I see in these principles is really shared responsibility for learning. The principles are, youth have an inherent capacity for positive development that is enabled and enhanced through multiple meaningful relationships, contexts, and environments, where community is a critical delivery system and youth are major actors in their own development. So I'm just going to read that one again because there's four different pieces that all connect together. Youth have an inherent capacity for positive development that is enabled and enhanced through multiple meaningful relationships, contexts, and environments, where community is a critical delivery system and youth are major actors in their own development. So out of that theory of positive youth development, there are six scales that are used, these developmental skills, supports, scales, and I'll just name them here. Commitment to learning, positive identity and outlook, social competence, empowerment, family and community support, and teacher and school support. And given our current context, as we're talking about mental health, we're talking about long-term investments, these are good bets. They're research-based indicators here. The last one I'm going to highlight is in the last section here. Direction E is lead, develop, and align our district toward continuous improvement. So I want to look at intervention impact, which is E6. This includes the percent of eligible students receiving an intervention and the average effectiveness of interventions. This is a new indicator that we really have not previously calculated within our system, but which we feel is critical as we talk about dropout prevention, as we talk about many of our other goals. This may include students identified for reading, math, or behavior interventions. It may also include students who need support to stay on track for graduation. Dropout prevention programs like Check and Connect would be part of this, as would special education or multilingual services. In general, we want to support multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, and this will help us get there. And at this point, I'll turn it back to Michael.
And at this point, I'll turn it over to Chair Dawson-Walton.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions? Yes?
So I first just want to say thank you to everyone that has worked on this. I have been hearing about these vision cards since I started about a year ago and have very much been looking forward to it. One of the, one of the things I was looking most forward to in the vision cards was a way for us to measure academic achievement outside of traditional standardized tests and a way to begin to think outside of sort of existing parameters and be a little more innovative. And as I look through each of these indicators, I'm not really seeing that beyond the achievement index, which is focused on high school seniors, and then the graduation continuation rate. So I was just wondering, and Superintendent, I know that I've talked to you about this multiple times, I'm wondering sort of where that's at and why I'm not clearly seeing that in the vision cards.
I can let Tom and Michael respond as well. You can see the letter E is, you know, E5 and E6 are focused on academic achievement, and there's a number of elements that could probably fit with that gap-closing progress or growth. So I'm going to not overspeak on this. I'm going to let Tom and Michael maybe add detail.
Okay. You go ahead.
Okay. The other piece that I will call in, and Thomas, I wouldn't dispute the fact that it's not explicit, but as you look through many of these strategic directions, what you'll see is a classroom domain or a leadership domain. And so if we're in domain, so if we look at, I think it's C, I'm sorry, B1. B1, and we're looking at Charlotte Danielson, if we look at one and three, one is planning and preparation, and three is instruction, right? So if we're talking about innovation and we're in partnership with our classroom leaders around making sure that the instruction is culturally relevant, responsive, it's innovative, it's creative, we're bringing in different resources to introduce our scholars to what the world beholds and what's available to them, that's what's going to get to a level of proficiency of three or four, ideally four. And so then, if we do that, that's what's going to speak to that achievement index, where hopefully there's people, our scholars, who are hitting more of those metrics. So, but to your point, it's not explicitly spelled out around what does that look like? And certainly, we have kind of post-secondary engagement, we have credentials, graduation credentials, and so forth, but that's, we'll take that as feedback. Tom, I think you had something that you wanted to add as well.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would add to that is really, when I think about what has typically happened in education in the time that I've been, you know, working in, in school districts, generally, we have a really good understanding of our outcomes and the degree to which outcomes are going up and down. And what we have much less information about is how we are impacting those outcomes by our actions. And so to me, that's what I'm really excited about with this model, is that we have a commitment not just to measure the outcomes, which, as you know, we give you a lot of outcomes to look at. That'll continue. What we're also committing to is to now being able to look more in-depth at the effectiveness or lack thereof of various strategies, various adult actions designed to bring about student outcomes. So I don't know if that helps at all.
Yeah, I mean, I would say generally, I'm excited about everything in the vision cards. I think just the piece that's missing is it, in many ways, feels very sort of high-level, and unless you have a high school senior, you can't really look at this document and have some sort of an indication as to how your student is doing at their grade level or how grade levels across the district are doing in terms of academic achievement outside of what was already mentioned in E5, which, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, which, yeah, E5, which is, again, getting back to state standards and standardized tests. So that's, I think, you know, this is a vision card at the end of the day, and I think we're trying to do better about how we assess our success and achievement across the district. And if we can find ways to measure student achievement, not from the perspective of teachers, but from the perspective of students, of scholars, outside of those standardized test scores, that, to me, would be a huge win.
I think Director Brooks, one of the things with D3, that's going to be with our SEL curriculum that we have coming, that's going to be a great opportunity. SEL curriculum that we have coming, that's going to be a great opportunity to roll that in. We haven't landed on one yet, but I know that that's being rolled out pre-K-12. That's going to provide us an opportunity for some potentially pre- and post-assessments that's going to speak to some of those items that you're just, you're alluding to.
One of the other questions I had was more, I think, just in terms of timing and logistics, just wondering when we'll actually start to, when this will actually be implemented, and when we'll start to see some, some of the scoring done, or what the timeline looks like there.
As soon as the board approves the roadmap, that's the green light to implement everything that goes with the strategic plan. So we've already begun, we have, you know, many of these data points, and some of them come at different points in the year. So you'll get regular monitoring reports, that's part of our model, right? So as we go through the year, and then we'll, we'll work on, you know, when's the annual review, so to speak, of different elements, knowing that there's a timing piece with some of the data and how it comes to us, or how we collect it. But the minute the board approves the roadmap, which all the other elements are linked to, that's the official goal, you know, we'll talk more about, Kate's got a whole communication plan ready to help promote the strategic plan.
And those monitoring reports will be done at one of the business, at some of the business meetings, or just to wrap in my head.
We'll begin mapping those out in our district board calendar that we now have a model for. So mapping those components and those strategic directions out over the course of the year.
One last thing, at least for this exact moment, but you know, as we're looking to plan that out, if there is some way that we can break this up into smaller chunks so that we're not having to squeeze the entire vision card document into an already-packed agenda, that would allow more time for discussion and questions, I think we'd all appreciate that, so.
Yeah, we always appreciate the pre-reading and work that's done ahead in meetings to help us be concise to the, the high-level information there. So I know we throw a lot of, like, sometimes these board packets are big, right? So we'll continue to do our best to do anything that you can do, and we can do ahead of time to help kind of leverage, creating space for the most salient points.
Thank you.
So I want to echo Director Brooks' statements about the need for being explicit about achievement and defining the mission, not just by state standards. And to explicitly find ways to be able to articulate what that means for our students, because our students, we get so stuck in test scores, I think we're really, we're missing the bigger picture, especially when I think about our students who are English-language learners, and how I feel like that group in particular has done a great disservice by hyper-focus on state standards, when the, the amount of years that it takes to master the English language and to perform on those test scores is just such a huge miss in terms of measuring their achievement and capabilities. I think that's something I'd like to see more explicit as well. I think the other piece that I see is, because I'm going back to our desired daily experiences, and so we took all that input and then we, you know, put it into Ed2Speak, educator tools, all of the right things, but I'm not seeing the connect back to how I would explain this to the families of how this is going to meet what they asked for, for their students. I can see some of it, particularly in D four, when you, I think you mentioned that some of these scales will include that, the student perspective and ownership and accountability for their own learning, and that's where I have a lot of interest, where it's, how do we continue to create, and this will go back to our higher-level strategic roadmap, but how do we kind of bring together everybody's role in student achievement, the student being empowered to own their learning, the parent engagement piece, the curriculum piece, all those pieces have to fit together, I mean, don't even, we haven't even talked about like the community engagement side, and have a community element support that as well. So I just want to make sure that as we put all these pieces together, it really actually comes back to what our families told us, and how we can articulate this wealth of measurement and content into plain language that, that we can put up, and we can understand, and we can say, yes, we're meeting the expectations of our families. So this is all really good detailed items, and I have not made it through every single link in every single document here yet, because it is a lot of data, but that's over the week, over the next week, and as we think about getting this approved, I, that's, I'm just looking for, are we missing anything that says that we're really going to be delivering on what that headline is? And are we missing anything that's going to kind of deliver on the bigger picture of what we're aiming for? So it's a lot of, a lot of content and a lot of great work. I think it's still digesting all of it.
Yeah, thank you for naming that. And so part of this process, and so what I heard you say, and how I'm thinking about it, is that there's some elements that we have as part of the process. That process are adult actions, the outcome is really going to be that feedback loop. So we're going to rewrite a lot of the stakeholder survey questions to make, that's that, integrate a reliability. We're committed as adults to do this action, families, scholars, how are you feeling about it? And that's going to give us, so if there's a differential between, for instance, that I'm a principal of a building, or heck, I'm an assistant superintendent, I feel I'm a really great leader to my family and community engagement team. But through the metric of the stakeholder survey, families are feeling like there's a disconnect, I haven't done a really good job leading or articulating what our deliverable needs to be and how intentional we need to be. So because of there's, because of that differential, Corey would look back to me and say, Michael, what's happening with family and community engagement? You need to do a better job leading. And one of the things that you, we don't have on here, but we, in our discussion, we have sub-metrics as well. So we, for each of these directions, we've added about five to seven other metrics. So Corey could say, Michael, why don't you pull out this metric and use this, because that's going to get us closer to vision in this area. So, but when we report that out, absolutely, it'll be in plain language and so forth. So the, the process is the, the experience of our scholars, the outcome, or I'm sorry, the process is adult action, the outcome is the feedback loop and integrator reliability of are our adult actions aligned with our vision, mission, and commitment, core values?
One last piece of feedback on that, so, feedback question. So recently, a parent survey had gone out, and a parent who is also a teacher had mentioned that, that they even had trouble kind of understanding what the question was asking. Do we test those surveys with, with any of our parent groups or any of our groups before they go out to, to just say, does this, is, are we, are we using language that is, because, you know, we, we get used to the language that we're familiar with in terms of whether it's corporate language, school district language, and just ensuring that it's actually reflective of understanding from those taking it?
Sure, one of the things, and I'll let Tom speak to it because he's the keeper of this knowledge, but one of the things we also talked about with the RISE committee, that, that might be a really good vetting tool as well, because we have various representation within that committee. But Tom, I'll let you speak to that a bit more informed.
Yeah, I would just say that the stakeholder survey questions really evolved out of the strategic planning process, and so priority work teams, core planning teams were where a lot of these questions came out, and they were vetted, and, and so, but even with that said, I think that it's important for us to consider, where are we now? You know, who are we trying to connect with now? What are the issues that people are facing, and what are our priorities now? So I think it's a, it's a really valid point that we need to be responsible.
So I'm, I'm just going to, I'm going to start with the things that I love about it. I love all the links that really give us a deeper understanding of exactly which metrics that we already are familiar with are being used in this vision card. I also really like the inclusion of, it was E six, the intervention impact. That's something that we, we hear about from many different groups that are embodied by this, this metric here. Specifically, Tony brought it up a little bit, the ELL group, you know, we often hear from families that they can't get out of ELL because it's very difficult to meet this high level of language proficiency before they're released from that program, even though they are actually quite successful in a lot of their academic areas. But they're still categorized that way. And so I think including this in here, how, how quickly are our kids receiving intervention and benefiting from it is really a valuable tool to understand what we're, what we're seeing versus what we're hearing and how those are related to one another. So I'm really excited to see that in here. But I will say that the very first thing I thought when I read this was, who is this for? Because it is high-level, and I think as a board, we appreciate a lot of the detail in here. I mean, I definitely appreciate it, and being able to connect it to all of the work that we're doing. But as a parent looking at this, I would have no idea what all of these things mean, or, or what surveys were done that impact these measures, and did my kid even take the survey? Where does my family, where's my family represented in this? As a parent, that, that would be what I'd be looking at and wondering about. And some of these things I would probably say, I don't even, that's probably not related to me or not relevant, when in fact it is, because all of these things impact all of our kids. And so I would say that we really either need to develop a different format for presenting this information to our families, or change the way that it's formatted so that it's digestible for not just people who are in this work all the time, but people who are not familiar with it and, and able to easily understand it. And to me, it feels like maybe it's two separate documents, because we do need this high level of information as a board. So that would be my feedback on that. I do, I think it's, I really do like the, the format of it and all the detailed information as a board member, but as a parent, it's definitely lacking the information that I would need.
So there's, what do I have, boss?
I, I hear you, and I think it's important to mention that we will also have, so you think of, we've wanted system-level accountability. Then we have department-level, school-level, school sit-plans, classroom-level, and individual students, so we got to tie all those things together. So this is meant to really tighten up and have much more accountability around the system. So I think when you look at this in combination with the things we'll see from a department level, a school-building level, classroom, and individual students, that's what we need to connect, connect to the system. Because this has been, you know, we were trying to avoid this being a 12-page scorecard, because other districts have a 12-page scorecard, and there's so many measures, it, it just washes out, right? So for example, in the academic achievement piece, we have many academic measures, fast bridge, access, we can go down the list, right? If we put all those in here, we can, now you're going to have a much longer scorecard with the system-level data, right? Because you're, you're going to approve the roadmap as a board in your governance role, and then as the management team, we got to implement an operational plan and measurements to hit what you've set out for us to aspire to. So I only add that in there because I think we all want what you're asking for, Director Douglas. As a parent, I want to be able to see my own child's performance connecting through the system. This is the missing piece we've had, though. We've, we've not had a system, what, system-level view, and how, how are we, what's our approval plan for the whole district across all 20,000 students, right? And I appreciate the way Michael and his team have added here some scaffolding, so that it's not a, a really large document that has so many, it gets lost, and we can do some alignment with departments and school improvement plans as well. So there's some focus to the overall vision card. So I, I think as we come forward to report back on this, we can weave in some of those layered pieces. So how does this look, as any one of these, we could have results for a school, or, you know, a level even, the level like in high school, down to buildings, down to classrooms. And that's kind of probably the next phase of this, but we needed the initial framework to be able to move it forward. Maybe I, please add.
No, good, yeah. It's, it absolutely is a tiered document, and as we thought about, that was a question that was raised amongst the group quite a bit, like, who is this for? Who is our audience who we're writing? So absolutely, it leans a bit more towards that Ed2Speak in this regard, but there's a framework, and it's teamwork, that there's this up and out, and then there's this down and in. So this document is more of a down and in, and we'll kind of hone it in a bit closer when we do the up and out, which will be at a board meeting, work session, something like that. Absolutely.
Thank you so much for all of your work. I know this has gone on, it seems like forever. It's wonderful to see the equity context analysis process domains and indicators throughout the plan. I appreciate, appreciate the way the plan addresses the policies, people, and practices that impact student achievements, and it includes the world's best workforce indicators that clearly identify the outcomes of the achievement gap, and that these vision cards are really built to solve. I also really just want to call out once again, it really highlights and builds upon the work that we've already started with the family and, and community engagement team. And I think it's so important that, you know, we're not just talking about metrics and measures and our vision, but also just really point out that we've already started this work. And so thank you to your entire team.
Thank you.
I just want to, I mean, I think this is excellent. I, you know, this is exactly really what we've been talking about. It's about really the district-wide indicators around systemic, or excuse me, system accountability. You know, and it's about, you know, what I see in here, strengthening connections to our parents and our community, our groups, and then internally throughout the district. I mean, I think we, what I've seen in my limited time on the board is just that there's a lot of things happening and moving in our district, but we're not always totally aligned, and this is really an attempt to start to align it. And I'm just excited to get the process started, because I do think that, you know, this is what is really going to build our cultural success in our district. And I'm really supportive of this and advancing this work, you know? And I think it does a good job of taking the quantitative, recognizing that, you know, right now, I mean, I think every district struggles with this, and just around, like, what is accountability, accountability is often tied to test scores. We know this, and this is what I think a lot of some of the districts are kind of trying to combat and really bring that qualitative and other ways to start measuring data, look at dropout prevention, and I, I look at a lot of these, and anyway, so I, I guess I just want to, I, I do want to say, I really support, I support this, I, I'm excited about this. I think it just sets us up for success and, and growth. And I love, you know, the questions, the mindful, critical questions, it's just really, it's really well-done. My question is, Mr. Lehan, since you're leaving us, and you, all your, you know, your, your time in the district, as you leave us with this, what do you think sets this apart from what our district has been doing? How do you see this kind of setting us up for success?
Kelsey, you're trying to get me fired or something like that. I, I guess what I'll, I'll offer is the fact, the team that I've worked with to develop these vision cards, there were such rich conversations. They were, we met for hours, and we were mentally exhausted at the end of those meetings because there was, there was hope. There was joy, there was passion, there was love, there was care. It was, we centered humanity through the conversation. And although there's opportunities to be a bit more explicit around the non-academic measures and so forth, there's a lot of, we're starting to see the totality of our young people in a different way. We're not coming forward with the world's best workforce measurements, we're seeing how the, the unique brilliance of each site, of each department, and then as a, as a, as a district. So what sets it apart is the joy of the staff to be able to celebrate different elements of their young people, and to bring themselves into those learning spaces, and know that from a system level, we're celebrating all of which educators bring into those spaces, and that's not something that's been done before. So I think that's, it provides a different lens for us to look and celebrate who we are as a system, and live out our mission in a different way than what we've had in the past.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I think that I see that in here, the, the spirit of what's happening in our district. So thank you so much. Does anybody else have any?
Well, I would just add, as I challenged Michael and his team to do this, we knew we needed the academic accountability elements. And how do we go beyond that? Because what we're really asking for our graduates to be, and what we expect is prepare prepared for the world, whatever that is for them in their necks, whatever they choose to be, we want them to be excellent at it, right? So that's beyond just that. It's academics and it's, you know, how are they, are we, are we producing great citizens and whatever they choose to be? So hopefully you see this, um, and we'll continue to flush out some of that desire you have around showing you the, the explicit nature of the academic elements. But, you know, we want, um, well-rounded graduates. What's that portrait of a graduate? What is, what are the skills that complement those academic skills that are, um, hopefully this is our starting point. And I'll tell you too, as we go each year, the board will have new feedback for where we need to tweak this. What are the new demands in our system? Um, as we see success in some areas and then not in others, we will, willing to recalibrate. Um, and as we evaluate the strategic plan and the, the strategic directions, are those still the, the right drivers for, for our system? So there's an evaluation process that we'll have to go through to see, are we meeting the expectations we want? Really to attain the vision that you, that you've set for, for us as a, as a school district. So, um, I appreciate the, the things you would like to see a little bit more. It gives us an insight into how either we have that, we just need to shine a light, a bigger light on that. Or continue to develop those components. But we needed an initial framework, starting point to move the, the roadmap forward. And we'll, as we live it and collect the data, we'll find the blind spots. We'll find the areas that need strengthening. But hopefully you see it's more comprehensive, cause our goal was to just go beyond just a, a, literally a score sheet. But beyond to something that has a little more comprehensive nature to it. And I, I wanna say thank you to Michael and the team for, for giving us their best effort to, to do that, knowing that's a continuous improvement piece. And I'm gonna kind of challenge Christina as she comes up, cause I've asked her this a lot. What, how does, you know, with all the district's teamwork, look at this was a much higher aspirational effort than maybe the typical vision cards. But Christine, I wanted to ask you to speak to that. As you've seen over your career, we worked with multiple school districts, what we were trying to accomplish with this. Cause we did lean on you for her advice, cause we got stuck a few times on, are we on the right path? And can we hit what we aspire to be in being alignment with, with the roadmap?
Right. And, uh, in answer to the question, how is this different? I can tell you that you do include, one of the ways that this is different than some of the vision cards we've seen over these last many years. Is that you are measuring core process as well as those outcomes. So one of the things that, that the team has in these draft vision cards is something that we don't always see in districts. In the past, what we've seen are those traditional compliance measures, right? It's what the state requires or, uh, the, the, uh, the test scores that we are used to seeing. And it is multiple pages long. Um, if you recall, in some of our teamwork's document, our education leadership system that we've gone through with you, we've developed, you and some of the, the leaders in your system, is we say, if you're going to have continuous improvement, you don't just focus on, um, inputs and outcomes. You really have to focus on core process to see change. And so part of what your team has done here is to say, we are going to focus on core process to see if that is going to shift. So that we have those outcomes that we want. Cause that's where you're going to be able to, to have the effect and the impact. Uh, and so that's one of the differences that I see here. And of course you have the, the merging of your E cap process. And our teamwork's classroom to boardroom process. So that was, that's also what is different from what we've seen. Is your team has really done something, um, unique by merging two different processes. And it, it, I don't know if you could hear my heart beating loudly every time I heard the language that was being used. And talking about bringing vision cards to you, maybe not all at once, but, um, mapping that out as part of your board plan. Ideally a three-year plan so that you can say, what does this look like? So that we're not consuming it all at once. And how, when the data comes in, we can time it so that we're maybe going to focus on that strategic direction or that vision card. And completely agree with all the sentiments here that this is really intended to measure vision and implementation and hold the system accountable. Did I answer the question?
Well, I, there was no wrong or right answer. I just wanted your perspective, cause of your experience with other systems and, and, and districts. Wrestling with how to do this, right? How to, how to create a, a system of accountability. That captures as many different elements as we, we can and around the things we think will transform the system, right? And I, I just wanna stress the, that this holds our, different levels of our organization accountable different ways. So you see, you see expectations in here for our administrators and our staff. And if they do their job as well as they can, that produces outcomes for students along with the, the more technical things that we've been talking about. And we think we can create a through line to the classroom and how we, the whole system is moving for a higher achievement and outcomes for, for every student. And that's kind of the, the next piece. As I transition to Christine, I don't know if we need to switch documents on the computer. Um, but as we move into the roadmap conversation, um, just to kind of highlight again, as Christine's getting ready, the, the roadmap gives us that high level prioritized direction. So by getting that finalized, um, that gives us, you know, that, that direction for, uh, the life of the strategic plan. And, um, as you've considered the final language of the roadmap, you know, know that we're guided by multiple things. And one of the things that we haven't talked much about, but is another expectation you have as a board for administration. Is, uh, raising the achievement, achievement levels for each and every student to higher levels. While we're also transforming the system to ensure that we have eliminated those disparities that we've talked a lot about in equitable student achievement. So that's guided in various forms, including even in policy 101. That is a long-term commitment that the board set that target for the, for the district and for the administration. To bring each and every student to higher levels or each and every scholar. So, um, I believe that, uh, once we can get the synergy of these, all these pieces of our roadmap or our strategic plan, including the roadmap. So for you to set this work in motion gives us the actionable, uh, steps to, to begin. So that's what we're excited about is getting to work with it, you know, really, really giving us clear focus. Through the, through the roadmap, our policies and, and all the components of this, um, overall strategic plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Christine to help us kind of hopefully get to, uh, a place where we can have support for the, the roadmap and, and really launch, um, the entire plan. So thank you Christine for being with us once again.
Thank you. And it's a pleasure to be back with you. Uh, it's, uh, I realized that last year at this time, it was all, uh, virtual. So I said, why is it taking so much? Oh, and it's so dark. That was why. We're in person, which it's nice to be here with all of you. Especially as we're, um, getting you to finalizing this portfolio, your strategic plan portfolio. We are so very close for you. And, uh, as Superintendent McIntyre mentioned, you have the, the other elements of your strategic plan. This is kind of the, the top. This is the driver of the goals and what's happening with the district. But you can see that the teams have already been using the, the draft language that you've been working through for the last several months. As they develop these, uh, draft vision cards, the operational plan has been in place. And those vision cards then will have your administrative team reflecting on, do we change our operational plan based on the data that we've seen? And then does the operational plan influence the vision cards and then the feedback that you receive? So tonight, what we are doing is bringing back to you, uh, one final time is the draft strategic roadmap. Uh, the last version that we discussed was, uh, November 8th, when we had our last, uh, board work session with you. And so I'm just gonna summarize the process for us tonight. You have developed several drafts of the roadmap over the course of the last four months. I think you might remember that August works, work session where we were working through every single, uh, element, the mission, the vision, the core values and the strategic directions. In your packet is, uh, some drafts that were based on a conversation that you had, starting back in August. When especially you were saying you had not had the opportunity, do you recall from August? To really talk about core values and what was important at the board table, at the board level. So it started back then and then now you're near the finish line with your strategic roadmap. And so in your packet and what we have here are five different versions of the roadmap. Version A, that you all have in front of you is the version that we last discussed, November 8th. And then version B was offered by Chair Dawson Walton as an alternative for consideration by the board. And, uh, we have asked you for feedback in response to that version. I'm just gonna show it on your screen here, this version here. And that was in response, my understanding is to some conversations with the board, some requests from the board members. And upon reflection of the stakeholder feedback that you all received. So, um, option B was offered to the school board members, um, for consideration. And the board members were then, um, asked to provide feedback on option B here. And, uh, please give your feedback on this option, provide any specific language changes, um, that you would want. If you, uh, would like to see any changes. And so what we ended up with here as a result of the board's feedback, and you can see the feedback, starting on page six of this document, so it's very specific. Are five different options in front of you. With really, the changes are primarily within the strategic directions. So version A, again, was that version that you had discussed in November. Version B are changes offered by Chair Dawson Walton. Version C are, uh, is a version based on Director Grady's, uh, one of the two suggestions that she offered. And so what you'll see here is it really, um, addresses, uh, I'm not gonna quote it completely. But it's really around recognizing and addressing systemic racism and prioritizing the implementation based on, uh, that statement. So that is option C. And that is changing strategic direction E. Okay? That is the primary difference there. In addition, I have for you, option D. This is based on feedback from, uh, Director Grady and Director Brooks. And so it was adding a strategic direction. And you can see that there are, uh, two variations. Similar, similar statements, but, uh, different, uh, vocabulary that's used there, slightly different language. Uh, to add strategic direction F. Again, around recognizing and acknowledging systemic racism and prioritizing change or recognizing the barriers. And then finally, based on conversations with many of you, with the superintendent, with Mr. Lehan and others. Uh, what I offer to you is something that isn't aligned with policy language you already have in place. So that's policy 101. And that is, uh, changing strategic direction E. So that it reads, address and acknowledge systemic disparities as you lead, develop and align our district toward continuous improvement. So it's actually taking language that the board has already approved as part of your policy work. And, uh, adding that and merging that with one of your strategic directions. So these are the options that you have in front of you, based, uh, explicitly on the feedback from you all and any changes that you provided. Tonight, here's what I would ask of you, is that you consider each option openly with the district view in mind. So which, which version here, thinking back from August to now, best reflects the improvement that the district needs? For each and every one of your scholars, based on your strategic planning and your E cap work. And as you think about that, could you provide your overall response? To the options that have been provided to you from some of your colleagues and then from us. And then briefly state which one of these is your preferred option and why? And, uh, which of these is an alternative option that you could also support? And then I would encourage you to do maybe a once around, starting with Chair Dawson Walton, since she offered the alternative to start us off. And then maybe once we listen carefully to each one of you, we could maybe conduct a final round to say, so, which option do you think you would like to bring forward for action at your regular board meeting? So, uh, I understand that, uh, Director Muscata Jones is not here. She has emailed back to me her preference and what she also would be willing to support. But I'll wait on that and have you all speak to the options first. Director Dawson Walton, do you want to begin?
Sure. Um, let's see. Had many conversations about this. Um, so, you know, I think, first of all, my hope is that we can be unanimously, you know, um, on our support of, of whichever version laid out here. I think that's so important. Um, I think that when I think about our, when we, when I think about all of our conversations together, um, it has ignited a spark in us, you know, to look at the, how we wanna, um, position our district in the future. And then tonight, you know, given, uh, Mr. Lehan and his team, you know, when I asked about what's different and just hearing about, just the spirit of joy and hope and, and, um, really the, the aspirational perspective from, um, leaders within our district. That, um, that have really had a pulse on what's going on, you know, I wanna, I wanna ensure that we have a roadmap to match that spirit. That's my goal. Um, and so when I think about, like, I've thought a lot about this roadmap. I kinda think in two tracks in my mind. I think about, you know, as a board member, board chair, and then I think about as a mom, right? As a parent in the district, because, you know, like we talked about before, like I wanna make sure, I think about my own kids too. Like, are we, you know, are we reflect, is, is, are we, are we all reflective in this too? Can I follow this? Can I believe in this plan? Can I believe in this as I choose where I wanna send my, my children to school? And so, you know, when I think about being on the board, I think about, you know, how close we are, um, to completing this process. And, um, after many discussions and perspectives and, um, working toward consensus. And, and sometimes I think that means that I even find, I find myself, um, making concessions. Um, and I know, I, I believe we all have really positive intentions with this, uh, work. And, um, we're making decisions based on what's best for each and every student, scholar, study, um, and for our district as a whole. Um, so, you know, just to, just, I would just let's say that we just wanna continue to listen carefully to each other. And, and, um, just really hear from each other on the options that, that are on the table right now, um, that are in front of us. And then I put on as a mom, as a parent, you know, of, of children in, in this district, you know, when we listen to the world's best workforce data. All I could think of is I could just see my own kids in that data. And I wanna ensure that when I think about the strategic roadmap that we have, you know, the highest of standards that we're calling out. The, the, some of the systems, is a systemic inequities in that. And, you know, I'm torn because personally, I would like to see more language regarding equity in this work. And addressing systemic, you know, um, biases and, and, and racism in this roadmap. And, um, and I know that this roadmap really takes us further than we've ever gone before as a district. That I know of in recent memory, memory. And it also hurts my heart to even think that any scholar or families, um, guardians would feel ever disenfranchised by the wording in this, um, in our strategic roadmap and, or disregarded or not supported, cause that's not, that's not the case. So my hope is that this roadmap, um, and this plan really brings about, um, the changes that we want, the changes that support the spirit of this document. Which is the, the, these are the true accountability indicators and, and measures. Um, and so that's kind of where I'm at. Um, I, I do believe that, you know, when I look at this, I think, you know, um, and I think about the interest of every scholar, each and every scholar in our district. Um, I do wanna make sure that everyone's reflected in this, this document. So, um, that's really where I am right now with it. Uh, my preference would be, oh, here. So, I do, I do believe we need to add, um, stronger language to address the disparities in our district. Um, so I would support E, uh, excuse me, no. Yes, option E. Um, and I do, oh, I guess my question would be also, and I, I was also looking at option D. Um, if we added another strategic direction. If we added another strategic direction, what does that, how does that impact the vision cards? Like, what happens then? Does anybody?
Do you want me to try and answer that first?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm smiling because I had a response, but.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Well, first of all, the, the more strategic directions that you provide, kind of the more distilled the priorities become. So the more priorities you have, the less targeted the, the work becomes. So that's just generally speaking, the more you have, and then you would more than likely have another vision card, though we could collapse them and say you could have just a few vision cards that, that align to your strategic directions. Probably that would mean some measures on a new vision card, but I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Leehan.
That's what I think about would be new measures on the card. And then as we, as we think about the strategic direction, how is that measurable? Right? That was the conversation that we had early on. We can certainly articulate something as a strategic direction, but is it measurable? And how do we go about measuring that? Because if we have something, but it's not truly quantifiable, are we doing more harm than good? And so I'm not trying to infer one way or the other, it's just a general curiosity. And then I just offer to the fact that with the vision cards and the embedded elements of the E cap process, I think there are equity components that are just naturally baked into the experience. So, we can certainly capture them. And again, I'm not trying to sway one way or the other, I'm just thinking about this from a technical aspect. And we want to be very clear on how we can articulate the deliverable to our staff. And so we might have to develop new metrics of how to measure this, or is it even measurable? Or is it a core value, quite honestly? So, those are some of the wonderings that I have.
Okay. Anybody else want to, can I hear from anyone else?
So, when I was working throughout this and, you know, I've been somebody who says, let, let what we say mean what we say. And when we say all, does it mean all? When we say best, does it mean best? And this is our goalpost. And so I was really going back to on March 4th of 2020, the experiences and all of the stakeholder input that we had from students and families. And inconsistently across all groups, everybody said, hold all students to high expectations and standards. Like, every single group was very specific in that they want to be, everybody to be held to the same high standards, and we want the, the highest opportunities. So when we say all, we mean all. And that should be clear, and we should settle for nothing less. So, I, I was very disturbed at the recent World Best Workforce report when we talked about closing the achievement gap, improving the achievement gap relative to the state standards, but all of our results went down. And so I sometimes think that when we start saying that we just care about closing this gap, or that becomes the focus, instead of ensuring that everybody's level is truly raised because we really mean best. When we say a goalpost, it's the goalpost for everybody, and we will not tolerate anything less than that. So that's why I was quite passionate about the language, meaning all means all, high means high, there are not qualifiers to that. So, but I also can understand that, that we're not there, we're not there yet. That's not, that's not in dispute at all. So, so I want to be able to reflect both that, that all means all, and that there are no different goalposts. It can be, we, we want this mission, this mission looks different in every single scholar's path. It can look, it can look different because we're all made differently with different skills and capable, but we all have the same capability, all have the same potential to achieve that path. So we want to make sure that we're saying, not every single path looks exactly the same, but, but our goalposts aren't different for anybody, any scholar in this district. So that's where I've become very passionate about wanting to ensure that we are never settling for different goalposts or, or something less. And that when we look group after group, it's very apparent that, that that's coming out, that that's desired. But I, but I do want to recognize without, without question, that's not where we're at today. And that's why we have this plan, is because that's not where we're at today. And we want to chart a new course with the specifics, with the accountability to get there. So, that's where I was coming from in terms of thinking about how we make sure we're really focused on realizing the best for every scholar.
So I'm going to circle back your comments and then maybe your preferred version or option, and then what else you might be, an alternative that you would be willing to support. And I wanted to make sure that I also had that from Director Dawson Walton. I think I heard you say E on support. And your preferred then would be?
Well, I really want to listen to the conversation first.
Director Simon.
So I guess like my preference is for A or B.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Any other directors?
What?
Yeah, I can go really quickly. It won't take long. I, you know, I know that we have been working on this for quite a long time, a lot of hours have gone into this. And I know that throughout this entire process, the board has really been intentional about wanting to be collaborative to get to a document that we all agree on. You know, I don't know the extent to which the general public has followed our progress and all of our work on this. But that's, you know, the one thing that I would certainly commend the board on is the commitment and passion that went into this document as well as the spirit of collaboration. I know, you know, I wasn't at the last meeting when this was discussed, but, you know, in the, the final processing and reflection as we were getting closer to finalizing this document, there was one thing that was just sort of unsettling to me, and it was the fact that equity wasn't a primary component of the strategic roadmap, considering it's what we talk about most and, and one of the things that we try to incorporate into everything that we do. So that's sort of how we're here today. I, you know, in terms of, I would say it certainly should not be a surprise that we're having a discussion today about incorporating equity into this document more prominently. I know there was something that was brought up previously multiple times throughout this process, and for whatever reason, I think probably that spirit of collaboration, it was kind of talked out of it, and it wasn't a prominent piece in the document. But I don't believe that I can approve this document without us being more explicit with that commitment. So for me, the preference would be B, the Brooks version. And then if I had to choose a backup version, it would be probably option B, the Grady version. One of the things that I would like to add in addition are the additional equity and equitable terms that were listed in option B, in both the core values and the strategic directions.
So Director Thomas, you were saying your preferred would be D, the Brooks version, and then the second alternative would be?
D, the Grady version.
So both D?
Yes. In addition to the, the equity terms that were added in option B.
Okay. You're right? Okay. Yeah, I would love to add the three pink words about equity from option B that Chair Dawson Walton suggested. My preference is to stick with option C, but I really would like to change out systemic racism versus systemic barriers and inequities as Director Brooks wrote. I think that kind of fills out a little bit more about, you know, it connects with the E cap process, so we're looking at all systemic barriers. While racism is our original sin, it's the primary one. I can speak from experience that transphobia and homophobia also work on some similar systemic barriers. And I think that those are all the kinds of barriers that we need to bring down for our students so that they have a positive sense of identity development and feel safe and supported in their classroom.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I have this correct then.
Yeah, I got the numbers right.
Your, your preferred option would be?
C.
C, but changing the language in strategic direction E to the language that Director Brooks offered.
Yeah, systemic barriers and inequities.
Right here.
Is, is more encompassing.
And your alternative would be?
Oh, D.
Okay. Director Brooks?
I would, I would be supportive of that. I think the one change that I would make is that I would actually include E because, you know, when we went through the vision work, or the vision cards, there are already measurable indicators for that item on continuous improvement. So instead of, you know, erasing those, I would actually probably just prefer to include those.
Director Brooks, are you saying you would support strategic roadmap E?
Sorry, have me jumping around. So, what Director Grady just said in option C, but just incorporating the continuous improvement strategic direction, it's in all of the others.
So your preference is D, but your, your alternative then would be C with the language changes?
My preference is what Director Grady just said, so what you wrote down for.
Okay.
But also adding the continuous improvement strategic direction. Lead, develop, and align our district toward continuous improvement.
Okay. So, keeping lead, develop, and align our, oh, I see. All right. So keep, it's essentially D, but change the language for E. Okay. I think I understand.
I have a clarifying question. So Superintendent McIntyre, if we were to write a vision card for the recognize, acknowledge, and address the systemic barriers, do we have an objective set of what we define as systemic barriers in this district? Because that's a very general word in tier, to the points that were made earlier by you and Assistant Superintendent Leehan. I want to be, ensure that this is specific and clear and that we know what we're attacking.
I'm open to Dr. Leehan's comments. I would say we got to go, we'd have to go back and look into that. I don't know if I have a perfect answer for you right now. I think what Michael said earlier is true, we'd have to go back and rethink the work that was put into E the way it was previously written. Or, or if we added another strategic direction, we'd have to do the same.
Is there a commonly accepted?
I don't know if you'd like to add to that.
I, yeah, I think that there would have to be some unification and some word norming specifically about what that means, how is that measurable as I think about systemic barriers?
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick, quick clarifying question to Director Simon? Are you talking about, were you talking about this addition right here? Were you talking about E or were you talking about the D, the F?
So on option D, Director Brooks, so I'm saying if we were to add this, what is specifically going to be meant by this? Because it's, it's a general statement, and I want to, I would want to understand what is meant specifically so that we can say, this is what we're saying, systemic barriers or systemic racism is, and this is the, what we would do to attack that, those barriers. How do we name the barriers is, I guess, my question.
I think part of that goes to our guiding question that we have, what is about our people policies and practices that is creating some inequitable outcomes? And we also could look back at some of the graduation rates, we could look at discipline disproportionality, some of those racially predictable outcomes that the, the school to prison pipeline, some of those components. We would certainly need to quantify that and be able to establish some local norms about what that looks like within our system. Could we do that? Yes. But it would, we would have to do some, some norming around what exactly are we, we honing in on to make sure that we're hitting the mark on that deliverable.
Okay. My turn?
Your turn.
Okay. So, I guess what I want, want to start with is that, to be completely honest, I'm feeling quite frustrated with how the last month of this process has gone. You know, and when we left our last meeting, we, I thought that we were, you know, possibly wordsmithing like a word or two, and that we would be bringing it forward for a vote at our next general board meeting. It was pulled from the consent agenda at that time. Chair Dawson Walton shared with us her reasoning, which I completely understand, Director Brooks wasn't here for that, and he wanted to be able to engage on that further. But she did request that we submit our feedback by the end of that week, which wasn't provided to me, I don't know if it was provided to anybody else. But this is the first that we're seeing some of these changes. And it is quite frustrating to, to just be getting this right now and have to look at it and evaluate it. I mean, this is a really important document that we worked really hard on, and I'm feeling like, well, now I have to make a decision about how I feel about this and take into consideration all the feedback that we've received up until this point to vote on it next week when we've, you know, almost a month's worth of time has passed, or we could have already had these language changes to evaluate before getting to this meeting here today. And so I, I just really need to get that out there. You know, we've talked, you know, Kelsey, your, your email to us talked specifically about honoring the time we've put into it, and I don't feel like my time's been honored here. And I don't feel like it is for our stakeholders, for us to make a rushed decision on completely different language that we haven't had any other opportunity to discuss up to this point. So I just want to put that out there, that I am really frustrated by getting these last minute language changes, these conversations about, well, wait, what about this one word? And what about that other word? We could have had some back and forth on that, that could have come through, Kelsey, previously, prior to this meeting. So, for that, I am quite frustrated. Anyways, on to the feedback on the specific proposed changes. I do really have concerns about how exactly do we quantify systemic racism or if the language is changed, changed to systemic barriers that are present? How, how, I'm sorry, that are persistent? How is that defined? How is it quantifiable? And how do we measure that? And what does it look like individually? And I, I do believe that there are systemic changes that we need to make in certain areas as we're moving forward. And I really think that some of the pieces of the vision card really address that specifically, that we can look at it and say, this is not turning out the way we want it to. So we know this is a system-wide process, and now as a board, we can come together and change that going forward. But I, I'm going to say specifically, I don't think that E should be removed. I definitely do not think that in our strategic directions, that we should remove lead, develop, and align our district toward continuous improvement. I do think that that absolutely needs to stay, I don't think it should be replaced. But I also would say that this really needs to be encompassing of all of our students and where we want to go. And, and when we say it's specifically systemic racism, that is a specific box, whereas the rest of this document is more about elevating everyone together. And this is a little bit different in the language and not exactly consistent with the things that we've been talking about, and that's not. And that's not the way I meant it. It's not consistent with the language that we're using in this document. Most of this is uplifting and positive and forward. And this is, I feel like this language is more like, uh, crushing and doing away with, right? And I'm not saying we don't need to do that. I'm just saying that the language is specifically, um, a different style of writing. I would also say that in a lot of our conversations, um, where we're interacting with families, like DPAC, for example, I can think about our last DPAC meeting. Uh, one thing that came up was how there were, there was a specific person in my group who is a community member and a parent, who was very frustrated by they, they felt that, um, when we say equity, that it's not meaningful because they don't feel that it's attached to anything specific. Um, and I think our vision cards do address those specific issues. But it felt, and I, I put this in my comments, it feels disingenuous to, to say that without having a quantifiable way to address it. Um, and so that is, I guess, something that I would really want to know. You know, what does that look like? How do we, how do we say that we're going to, um, address this? We're gonna eliminate this problem or we're gonna change this issue? And we don't really know how to define the issue or we haven't defined it as a district. So I guess that's a concern that I have. When I look at these, my preference, I'm conflicted. I, I think that the language in, um, option E includes the continuous improvement piece, which I think is really important, we need to keep that in there. Um, but it does also say that we address and acknowledge our systemic disparities, um, which I think is more encompassing of the fact that we do have other issues, like Director Grady said, that are not just specifically racial issues. We have a lot of disparities in our district. And I think that the vision cards, some of the things actually on E would get at where we see disparities and how we, how we fix them. So I am conflicted. I would say my preferred options are option B or option E. And of course, I'm, uh, amenable to option A, which I already previously said in my notes. I would be, um, comfortable with option A as well. But it doesn't sound like there's a lot of other support for that option. So I think that, um, my preferred options would be B or E. I, I think that's about all I have on that at the moment.
Yeah, I think in previous conversations, when we talked about what is that envisioned future state? So if we are, if we are able to, um, eliminate disparities, disparities, it would look like A through D. Um, that's actually what eliminating disparities mean. That everybody is welcome and included, that we have a culture of achievement and rigor for everybody, that everybody has participation, um, that we have a called, uh, system of excellence and operational innovation and accountability. So to me, I thought that we were aiming for what's our envisioned future state? And that actually is the end state of overcoming the disparities. So, but I am rereading option E and I don't, I, certainly we acknowledge that disparities are, um, existing. But I thought that we previously had really robust discussion that, that end state is A through D, that we actually achieve E by A through D. So that, that's, as we think back on our conversation, that's where, where my mindset had been throughout this process is what does that end state look like? What does that future state look like when we have accomplished that?
So what I'm hearing, and I, and I, uh, received a message back from Director Muscata Jones, because she's doing board work in another place tonight, is my understanding. Uh, and her feedback, I thought she had replied all, but apparently she had, was, uh, that she supported option E with the new version of E, strategic direction E, but she could also support option B with either of the Brooks or Grady version as, as her second, is what she was, what she emailed to me. And I know because of your technical issues.
Say that again, so she, E and then what was the second part?
E, and I can find you, uh, her language specifically. One second here. She quotes, I quote for her. "I like option E with adding the reducing barriers language. I can get behind option D with either Tamra or Thomas's suggestions." And so that's where we're, so it sounds like we have some support for B, E, uh, C and D. Great, perfect. Uh, why don't we go around, now that you've heard from each other.
Yeah.
Um, as you, uh, think about the district interest, trying to move toward consensus and really, uh, thinking through, I know that this is passionate for all of you and that you're trying to make this aspirational and address each and every scholar in the district. If you could go around the table and just one more time, let me know. As we, as you've heard from each other, is there a version here that you believe that you could all move toward action on together? That's, that is my question to you all.
Could you just real quick repeat again? Director Muscata Jones', um, response for option E? I thought, I had heard you say with them is a small word change.
Uh, I think she said with the addition of, let's see. "I like option E with adding the reducing barriers language," which is, uh, that's the way that she said it.
Okay.
Can I just jump in while you're doing that? If it's, it may or may not be helpful to you as a board, but I feel like maybe you want to hear from myself and Michael on this. As I've, if we listen to it, we've been, I think, um, so I'll speak for myself. I think Michael's on the same page. Um, my recommendation to you is either option B as in boy or E, uh, the last option. And here's why. Our best foot forward was with the current strategic directions and the work that's been put in over months to build those vision cards and the operational plan that we began to, you know, began to try to work off of. And, um, I would suggest that those two options, uh, are kind of, to me, the, the common ground you could find amongst, because you're, you're divided on this again. And, um, I would say that, uh, the closest thing we have to some definitions that you're wrestling with was, was through our E cap process. That was for our context and our district, that's where the best effort was put forward to make some definitions around that, which has driven this forward. And I would also say that, um, for example, letter E is in alignment with the policy that's already approved by the board. It's also consistent with language in the legislative platform. So you have some connections there that, um, might help you in your thinking on this. Uh, but we both landed on B, B as in boy and E as in elephant. It's hard to say B, D, E with a mask on. But it's also in the same, so sorry for that. But again, I don't know if that's helpful to you, but based on the work that I've seen the administration put in, maybe, maybe that gives you some clarity or muddies the water. I don't know, but I just thought I'd offer that up before you go back around one more time. You want to add anything, Michael? Because I asked you for your opinion on this, so. And I think we're gonna struggle with adding a, a, a direction and coming up with the measurement pieces to that. Uh, we'd probably get there, but it's a, it's more, it's additional work that we'd have to engage our, our teams all over again with. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's fair to say. And I, the only other thing that I would add is, uh, please just keep E. So that's just.
Keep what?
Just please keep E. Um, because I think that's a, that's one of the strategic directions. So let's not eliminate that, but, uh, yeah, Cory and I visited and that's kind of where we landed. But, um, should it go a different direction? Please just keep E. That's just my humble request.
And specifically lead develop and align our district toward continuous improvement? That version of strategic direction E, not option E? Should have numbered them. I apologize for that.
Yeah, Christine. So I have one more question for, um, Assistant Superintendent Lee Han and Superintendent McTeer. So I, I feel like what we're really wrestling with is, I think in some ways, we're all saying the same thing. But I think we're also wrestling with, like, we want that there's a desire to be overt about eliminating disparities. And we each have a different view on how we do that. But I think substantively, would you say that the, the actual actions and vision card items under an item of E, um, of, uh, address and acknowledge disparities? Would you say subs, like, uh, from a substantive standpoint, that, that is already captured in the vision cards? Like that if we were to add this, that we're already doing this in the vision cards in, in the, in the detail?
So I would offer that, um, Michael might disagree with me and I'd like him to offer his thoughts. I think any of these versions, because for us, it's the operational plan and the vision cards. That's the, that's the work of making the roadmap, whatever version it is, successful. And you've heard us say that before. So, um, I feel like the, the clarity around the strategic priorities that we would have year over year and how we're gonna move forward with trying to measure those and really be, uh, explicit about those things that we've talked about earlier. For me, you know, any of the versions, I think, are, are supported by the operational plan and vision cards. But, but the roadmap's yours, right? The operational plan and vision cards are the administrative's way of carrying out your, your, your board, um, decision on the roadmap. So, uh, in, in hopes of trying to get you closer to some common ground, I think, you know, B and E resonate most with us as far as success with implementation and results.
So I think it has less to do about language and more to do about accountability. Within this district, we've been doing equity work for years and years and years. But there hasn't been accountability around the equity work to the extent in which one's disposition is equity focused or equity oriented. So to the extent in which we are willing to apply a level of accountability to the proficiency and the consciousness of our colleagues, that will measure how we progress towards a more equitable reality for each of our scholars. So to me, it has everything to do about accountability. And if I center my identity as a black male in this organization and, uh, the fact that we still need to talk about equity, it almost rubs me as disingenuous because I want to see action. And so the action comes through accountability. It doesn't come from words on a paper.
Agree. Thank you.
So my only, and I know we could talk ad nauseam about this, but my only thing to that, and I hear you, but it kind of goes back to the, like, the question, the feedback from this plan is like, this is really hard to interpret. Like, how would somebody just know that? And I think that's what, you know, Director Thomas, Director Thomas, Director Grady. It seems like that's what you're, like, you're trying to just pull out because it, yes, I think we all agree. We see it in here, but to the point earlier, it's like, this is a very inward-facing document. I understand it's, um, and so the meats and the, like, art is in here. And then, you know, this is what, as a board, we're like setting that. So I can understand, and that's why I really am, I struggle with this because I, I do think we need to, um, I do, I believe we need to acknowledge the, the systemic disparities within our district. I do think that E, um, I don't think it would change the indicators because I think that's what we're getting to. Um, and then I, you know, um, I grapple with, um, you know, just, I mean, to me, I, I, I think the systemic barrier, I mean, I, my interpretation is systemic barriers and disparities, um, I guess I haven't, I haven't looked up the exact definition of the differences between the two, but I, I think they're in alignment. So I, I still, I, I do stand with E as a way to, um, I, and with Director, um, Simons. I, I absolutely believe we're really saying the same thing. It's just how we, how we're articulating this. And, um, so that probably is not helpful, but Director Grady, um.
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, I think the build upon what you were saying. I think talking about equity, um, is just talk and we've been doing it for decades. Um, that, that this accountability piece is about moving us into action. Um, and that it's not gonna be achieved unless we recognize, acknowledge and be accountable as a system for the harms done to children that are historical, persistent, measurable and predictable. And that was my thought of going in is, is looking at all of this and thinking about 60% of our students that are, that are students of color and they need to be seen. And their history needs to be acknowledged and changed. And otherwise, all we're doing is continuing to talk about the achievement gap without taking accountability as a system, as an adult, as adults about how we help children. So, um, I see Superintendent Lee Han's point about keeping E. So I would change my vote from either E, um, or Thomas's, or my suggestion on option D. If that's helpful at all.
Well, did you say he is an echo?
I'm getting confused. I'll say it again. Um, my option C eliminated the previous option E. So I will withdraw that and then move to option D where I'm also, but that also keeps the lead development aligned with our, our district with, towards continuous improvement. I also really appreciate the language in, um, option E. Um, I would like to add, um, maybe, well, no, I'll, I'll not add anything else. Stop, go ahead.
Yeah, so I am supportive of option D. Um, again, Assistant Superintendent Lee Han, I am appreciative of your words and perspective on this. Um, I know some of that was mentioned when we talked about equity previously in this process. Um, you know, for me, whether we add another strategic direction to the vision cards or we find some way to reorganize that as an equity framework or lens should be applied to everything that we do, um, I think I'd be fine in either direction. I think for me, um, it's really just, again, in terms of accountability and our direction for making sure that it is centered in everything that we do and that it doesn't just come up occasionally. Um, I know that we have a significant number of resources, um, here in the district that are, um, in place to address equity. Um, and I am certainly supportive of that work. But it shouldn't just be the equity specialists or, um, you, Assistant Superintendent Lee Han. It shouldn't, it should be the entire district. Um, and so that is why this is so important to me to keep in. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna stick with D.
So I'm hearing now you're, you're narrowing it down to E and D, echo and dawn.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Okay. So Director Brooks, when you say an equity framework lens, is that Christine, then, kind of in your world as you were consulting, is that like a separate, where would that fit in? You know, that framework, that lens, um, how, how does that fit into?
So there's a number of different things. You do have policy 101. If you don't have a policy or a framework around equity, that is usually where we end up in the state that we're in here with, um, wondering about what language do we use and what do we mean by equity and disparities in our district? So I have seen, um, districts develop, uh, an equity, uh, framework, a decision-making process around equity, uh, an equity lens that you apply to decisions, whether it's at the board table or, um, at the administration table or at, at the school level, where you could move forward with this and then do the work of saying, do we need, um, an equity lens or framework in our district that we apply to all of our decisions? That is something that I have seen in other districts that is in addition to, to specifically call out, here's what we mean and here's how we apply it in our district.
So maybe I can jump in and just point out, it's on the wall. We have tools that we've tried to do that for, well before I was here. The capacity equation, the clear model, the compass, and those four tools have been what we have tried to apply through the system, through all the decisions. Everybody's been trained, every employee is trained on it, um, for phase, what, phase one and phase two. But that's why we did E cap with, and to try to, uh, improve upon that, those system tools and how we go about our decision-making. So I just want to shine a light on the work that has been done here that we're trying to improve on because really about the aspirational. because really about the aspirational work to get even better. And we believe the E cap process is going to improve on what are the system tools to, that every decision in every department should be looked at. And that, that's what we're trying to aspire to through, through the roadmap and all the other elements of the strategic plan. I just had to point out, because, you know, there, there's been a lot of work that's gone into, um, the system. I, I, it's what drew me here to the district, because this district is miles ahead of other districts on this work. And the commitment here has been very strong. We still are hungry for better results, as they are just, we, we continue to strive for better results.
Having heard that. Uh, here is my wondering for you, my question to you. It does sound like you are broadly in agreement, uh, and it's about how are you stating, um, your, um, equity vision in your strategic roadmap? Uh, and, and ideally, you will have consensus and unanimity when you approve your strategic roadmap as a board. There is a, a lot of power in that. So, my question to you, Paul, is, given what you've heard from each other, Director Miskata Jones is not here, if you were to come forward with, uh, one of these versions, uh, could you support, could you all support either E or D as your option, version? E or D as your strategic roadmap?
So, I would just say, um, I really appreciate that perspective, Superintendent Corey McIntyre. And, um, the, you know, what I, what I think about when I'm looking at this is our mission statement, you know, really is to inspire and prepare each and every scholar, right? And we have, I think, really encompassed that. We spend a lot of time working on making sure that this document is for each and every scholar. And I, and that's why I really feel like E is my preferred document, as we've continued to have this conversation, because it really does still, um, include all of the work that we've done. It include, it uses language from our policy 101, which specifically addresses some of the issues that, um, are being brought forward with the addition of, um, consideration options C and D. But it also has, it's more than just racial. It talks about the whole system and disparities and barriers. I do like the addition of the word barrier, um, from Director Miskata Jones. I think that that's a good addition to that language. But I also really like that it's succinct. It's, it really encompasses, I think, so much of the work that we've talked about, um, and spent so much time digging into. And it doesn't, um, take away from the work that we're striving towards, and reflects that we're, we're working, this is for all students. And so, I really, I just would say that option E is definitely my preferred. I still am, um, open to option B as in boy, um, if there's, if anybody else is still interested in that one. But I, I would say that, um, I don't, I don't really know how else to, to say it, but this is, this is, you know, work that we've, we've spent so much time on. And, um, to move this forward, I think that E is the one that we have the most unity on, maybe with a little bit of wordsmithing. I, I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks about that, but, um, I want to make sure that we continue to reflect the goals and the core values in, in this, that we've, that we've worked so hard on. Thank you.
And maybe just one more comment for the board, to give you something to think about. Michael, would you share with? I, I, I think what you're trying to share with me is our E cap process aligns most with which options, from your perspective.
So, if we look at the vision card and we look at E1, uh, that's looking at the E cap C1 through C8, and then D1 through D11. And specifically, what those areas are, and I'm sorry, the document, uh, isn't, uh, you don't have it in front of you right now, it looks at professional learning and growth, D1 through D11. And then, C1 through C8 looks at, uh, collaboration and decision-making. So, really, that accountability and making sure that, um, we address and look at some of those structures that are in place, have historically been in place. So, that would be the measure that we'd use on that vision card, E1 in particular, through the equity context analysis. So, um, we can get that out to board members.
Does that, um, I don't know if I framed the question right, does, does the E cap results that you were referencing there have any tighter alignment to the options?
Oh, um...
Because you and I said B and, B and E, we thought had the tightest alignment.
Yeah, well, I think that there's, there's, I hear the explicit desire for it to be stated. I, I certainly hear that. Because it's pre, present in E already, I think that option E on the various iterations, and vision card E are, are aligned. Yeah, we really should have numbered this. So, uh, there, there is some, there is some alignment there, yes, I believe there is.
Given what Superintendent McIntyre and Director Douglas have stated about, uh, options B and E, we could work to merge those two options, so that we're adding in the, um, additional words offered in version B, and marry that to, if you will, option E, so that you have both of those together.
So, through this conversation, um, I can support E, um, because I don't, I don't think we've ever said we don't want to acknowledge that disparities exist. I think we need to, with our focus on results, I think that's front and center, the fact that we need to improve the outcomes. And I, I still continue to feel strongly, I think we do that, reflected through A through D, but I think absolutely there's, um, I think we are, are always explicit and desire to be explicit in saying we're not there, and that clearly the results say that there are disparities still. So, I'm supportive of E.
I am supportive of D.
D?
So, we have E and D, and we're still down to, to those. We don't have agreement, and we don't have...
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I, um, how do we get to a place that we can, um, we can move this forward to vote on it, you know? I, I think it would do a disservice to our community to have a, you know, having a, uh, not go, and not coming into an agreement on something that, I mean, this is like the, the next three years of our, you know, um, work. So, I would ask, like, is there, so one, I guess my, my, one thing that I, I don't think we want to do, and maybe we do, uh, people, but, I don't, we, do we want to add another strategic direction? That'd be one, you know, question, I, if, I think we need to just ask, because, you know, it does what goes in. Now that, now that we can fully see the vision card, and what it entails, the, the measurement tools and, excuse me, the indicators, I think that's a question that, you know, needs to be raised. And then, is there any way, is it, what, um, in these statements, and I would say, I am supportive of these statements. I, I've, I also feel like I want to br, come to consensus, I mean, if I'm completely honest, um, around this. So, then I'm wondering, like, what in that language, what are sticking, what are important key pieces to that language? Those two sentences?
That's my question, I think.
May I ask a question? I guess what I, I would say that we each ask ourselves, or maybe have a discussion about, is, what's the purpose of this? What, what is, you know, I mean, generically, we know what the purpose is, but what is the goal of our strategic roadmap? And when we consider what the goal is, are we considering what the goal is in each of these strategic directions? Is the goal represented here the way that we want it to be represented?
So, I think, um, we've had several sessions on this, and we may have exhausted our discussion and input on it, and it may just simply be the, the chair and the vice chair and your, um, elected roles to do the best of incorporating that, and put something forward for the vote, the board to vote on.
I can offer one more option, and that is, the board makes a statement about what you do mean by equity. That may take longer to come to agreement on, and if you have consensus around one of these options, if it's option E, I'm hearing four, if I'm, uh, hearing from Director Miskata Jones that four of you are leaning toward option E, and two of you would prefer option D, you certainly could develop a, a statement around, a board statement around equity and what you believe. And some of the, uh, the language here that both Director Brooks and Grady have offered here are the reasoning behind this strategic roadmap, rather than in the strategic road. It is why you have developed the roadmap that you have. That is something that I would just offer to you.
And on strategic direction, E, can we add systemic disparities, barriers, and equities, not necessarily in that order?
Systemic disparities, barriers, and what'd you say?
Inequities. And can we add, align our district towards actionable change and continuous improvement? Maybe that's redundant, now that I say it. But I'm just trying to pick out the pieces of what I wrote, because the language really matters, but also, like, narrow it down.
So, uh, I'll just read this aloud, I certainly can change it here. And I'm just going to say, so you would change the original, uh, option A to read, um, similar to what's offered to you in option E, address and acknowledge systemic disparities, barriers, and inequities as we lead, develop, and align our district toward continuous improvement?
Yes.
You said?
I did say actionable change in there.
Is that redundant?
Yeah.
Same thing, continuous improvement, actionable change? Kind of, kind of not. There are a lot of words in there.
And I was trying to simplify, so.
Okay, so address and acknowledge systemic disparities, barriers, and inequities as we lead, develop, and align our district toward continuous improvement.
Director Brooks?
Um, I would add to that, prioritize and implement equitable change that reduces barriers to success for racially marginalized scholars and, or scholars.
We, we can't, we can't single out a single group in our strategic roadmap for the whole district.
Can you, tell me more about that, I don't understand.
Can you repeat what you said, because I?
I don't, I don't, I don't understand, we can't.
No, 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 I'm asking Director Brooks to re, to repeat his statement. It sounded like you were singling out a specific group, but maybe I misheard you.
I did not, was there a specific group that?
Could you just repeat what you said, because I?
Yeah, I would add, if we were to go that route, that Director Grady just mentioned, I would add a sentence onto that, this is prioritize and implement equitable change that reduces barriers to success for racially marginalized scholars.
Don't we want to eliminate barriers for all of our scholars, but?
Right, that's what I was talking about, is that.
I think you're restating D, so I think we're just at an impasse, and I, I want to be respectful of everybody's input, but I'm not sure we're making any further progress at this point.
So, what we can offer to you is, uh, an option that you can, uh, move toward action, trying to incorporate, uh, as best we can, uh, what we heard tonight, and, uh, and bring that forward to you. Really, within the next couple of days, I can provide that, based on what we've heard tonight. It sounds like you would prefer E or some version of E and D combined, using that language.
I think we're really close, will we lose voting on this next week?
The plan is to vote on it next week, yes.
Okay.
You've had a lot of discussions about it. It sounds like you are, uh, working toward consensus here with each other. You're listening to each other and trying to respond to each other. I'm seeing that, I, I also know you're all, each very passionate about where you're coming from here. So, what I can offer to you is an alternative, based on the most recent suggestion from Director Grady, that combines some of D and E, for your consideration and action.
I mean, do we have consensus that we will be voting on this next week? And I'm asking that because I don't want to hear a complaint about the process. Um, if everyone's ready to vote next week, great, if not, we can wait until next month.
The only feedback I have on that is if we're going to create, like, a whole different thing, and we need to have the vision card work, that, that's the only potential problem I have, because I want, I would want to see the vision card that goes with it before approving it. So, if, if we do have a version that's adding something significant in, I, I don't want to push that through without knowing what that means.
Remember, you're not voting on the vision cards or the operational plan, you're voting on the roadmap. So, we, whatever you set as a roadmap, we will de, adjust or refine the vision cards, and that, that doesn't require a vote. That's, that's the administration's work along with the operational plan. So, it doesn't necessarily have to stop, if, what we really need is to set the roadmap, and then align the vision cards to whatever you decide.
But I think the vision cards were extremely helpful to say, this is what is meant by these strategic directions, like that bottom of the top.
Comprehensive.
Yeah.
Well, and I see, um, the language that we're coming up for E is very consistent, which, which, with what's already in that vision card. It's just more explicit about what we're talking about in the language. You don't think we're really adding that much differently?
So?
We're just being more explicit about how we look at our system in terms of the barriers, barriers that lead to predictable disparities.
I could offer, your discussion tonight has moved you from where you were November 8th to a new place and a new understanding, thanks to the vision cards, and also your discussion, listening to each other. I can provide you with one new version, based on what we've heard tonight, and based on much of the consensus that I've heard from the offerings here tonight. And then, you can, I'll, I'll send it to the superintendent, he can forward it to you all, and, uh, and you can decide if it, if you're ready to move for action on that.
So, I would, I would just offer up to the board, I want to make sure we're clear. I like Director Brooks' comment. Uh, it's exactly why we waited last month, is, to me, it's critical, to, to me. Something all six of you can stand behind? Because this is the, other than hiring a superintendent, probably the biggest thing you're going to do is a board. And so, for that to go forward in some kind of divided vote, just isn't optimal. Maybe that's what has to happen, but if, if a little more time, another month, to get the next three years to get, or beyond, right? Because you're going to build on, whatever the next board looks like, whoever that is, if it's me here or someone else, you're going to be, continue to build on the next strategic plan, right? So, this is setting a course into the future. So, um, logistically, if you don't like trying to land this in the next two days, to decide next week, December 14th, and that's January 25th, and you give yourself a little over a month, um, knowing we've got other items to tackle, um, but it, it, I'm just giving you that option to kind of talk that through, unless you feel like you're, you're that close, and we can solve it in the next two days.
I think we, I think we're really close, and I would hate to hold up.
So, that's fair to decide, it's going to map, getting, those are your choices, I think, as I see it.
My preference would be to, that we vote on this on December 14th. I, I, you know, I don't want to keep this kind of holding us up, I think, I do think we're close. I mean, I, my preference would be not to include, to create another strategic direction, because I, I, I think we're all feeling...
Because I, I, I think we're all feeling good about what we have with the, the roadmap. I, I, excuse me, the, the vision cards. Um, but I, I think I've heard, I mean, I hear what, what everyone, you know, their sentiments and, and what's important. And I think that we can work out something to, to kind of bring some consensus hopefully and with your ability to kind of wordsmith some of this, to really have a concise strategic direction. So, um, that would be my preference to, to vote on this December fourteenth. Does everybody else agree with that?
I agree. Director Brooks?
That would be my preference, yes.
Okay. So Christine, you'll-
I will, um, take what I've heard here tonight and, uh, give you an option. And, uh, hopefully it will be the option that you can all stand behind.
Thank you.
All right.
So I have a proposal for the remaining time tonight. I, I do wanna echo Christine. Thank you very much. And I do appreciate you, the time as a board you spent on this tonight. It, it just, from a distance, that shows how much you do care, right? So please, please know that, um, it's very important to each and every one of you, even if it's in slightly different ways. That's the richness of you as a board. And I do believe it's, it's how it'll help us move that plan forward. So thank you for wrestling with this and struggling with it and, um, moving closer to getting it finalized. In consulting with John from a distance, we, we think we can, we, we need to tackle the update on the tax levy cause you're voting on that next week.
Yep.
We can push the enrollment update out. I've been giving you regular updates and John can, can bring that to the January work session. So we can restructure our, um, agenda tonight and still finish on, close to on time. And I can, as I've been updating you on the board calendar, nearly every week, we can do, continue to do that in the same fashion. But the tax levy update, I think, is important for you to hear ahead of next week's vote. So that's my recommendation. And I'm just looking for a little acknowledgement if that works for you all.
Yeah.
Thank you. So John, thank you for being patient. And the latest, uh, and I know some of you may need to take a mini break. Or can we, can we take three minutes? Would that be helpful? A really short three-minute break? And then can you do it in ten minutes, John?
I do too.
My goal's two.
Oh, wow.
The body of language, even with masks, was obvious.